And in a few days he died. What does that family do? Immediately they took all the ornaments and the land and every money and every documents to their house and kept her as a servant to their house. She asked for the ornaments, she was not given. She was only given the wages of thousand or two thousand for eating and you eat and you keep well they said. The police station boy. And they went to the station. And they kept many punchiers. Even the servants of God went and spoke. And they kept the people outside and spoke. Only she is the one who saved and came into church. They are all great Hindus. They all together gathered and said he is dead, we will not give any share to her, we can take even her property. This is my ornaments with fifty pounds they give to me, she said they did not give her. She suffered a lot. She suffered to educate the child. To pay fees she suffered. After a certain period of time, she was chased out of that house. This is her being alone, she suffered a lot. But somehow she educated this daughter and made her to study teacher's training and lifted her. Yesterday only she said. After fifteen years, eighteen years of this problem, they handed over the ornaments to her. Four lakhs of money and fifty five pounds they gave to her. And she has no share of the property anymore. To give it to their hands such a condition. Do you think, have you gone and got instructed in anything? The Lord will bring out. He will break the iron doors. And he will give off the treasures which is hidden. Because his structure is a righteous structure. Although it delays his judgment will not fail. The king will ask for that day but the Lord will wait and he will kill. The Lord will wait and kill. Therefore do not be afraid that your righteous things have gone, that this is a righteous structure, the Lord will stand on your behalf and do righteousness. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Book of Esther chapter five verses two and three. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. This is the most important aspect of the history of Queen Esther. Her beginning days were days of sorrow. She was a girl who lost her parents in her small age. She had beauty, she had wisdom and understanding and she had every favor but she did not have parents. About this we can see in Esther chapter two or seven. Her father and her mother had died. And her days of beginning was full of sorrow. Even today in many of their life, their beginning days are full of sorrow and losses and many failures. But the Lord is so merciful upon us because he is caring about us more than the faults of the earth. Although she was an orphaned child, the Lord ordained Maudika and he took care of her. Because she had the mercy of the Lord, the Lord lifted her up unto the position of a queen. Even after coming to that highest position, she remained to her whether it is life or death. Even after she came to the highest position, we can see that struggles kept following her. In that kingdom we see that for that girl it was the highest position. Of the women of hundred and twenty-seven countries, she was in the highest position. Although the Lord had brought her to that highest position, it was a question whether she would be alive. About this, Maudika says in Esther chapter four verse fourteen that if you ask lack concerning this then you and your household will be destroyed. You and thy father's house will die. Now Esther is put into a great struggle of whether their life or death. How much ever we progress in our worldly life, there are problems also preceding us. Sickness is following us. And our needs are following us. Struggle of Satan is also following us. Above all, death is following us. Although the other powers are coming without knowledge, death is coming without a knowledge. It is at this time she had a great struggle but we are going to meditate as to how she had overcome it. There are problems in everybody's life. If one is going to say that he has no problems, then he is affected in his life. Only unto him there is no sorrows. But unto every human beings and there are problems following them. However, he is lifted up to the highest position to that extent problems are following him. It is at that time she said that if I should perish, I perish and she fasted. I and my maidens will fast for three days without eating or drinking. I will also fast in the presence of the Lord. Be too fast with me. I will go against the command of the king and enter the king. Even if I should die, I die. With a great consequence of whether life or death, she was pushed into such a situation. Dear beloved, why is this worth coming to us this morning? How many of you are cast into a troubled state and in this situation come to the presence of the Lord? We know the solving of some problems. But we are not able to create solutions to them. Certain things we do not know how to solve them. In some matters we know it but we are not able to proceed with the matter but some matters we do not know what the solution is. Here it's a great problem. It's not an individual man's problem. But it's the problem of caste. It's a problem of a tribe. The Jewish tribe whether it should live or die is was the question. It is at this situation that she seeks for the presence of the Lord. In such a desperate situation, she fasted and tarded in the presence of the Lord. The laws were very horrible. Although a woman she was a queen, although she was in the highest position, she could not meet the king very often. Although she was a queen. In order to enter the king, there were certain laws and orders. How much ever we be the children of God, in order to go to the throne of God, we have to have a better life. The Lord has kept different paths for us to go to heaven. Living the laws and orders, he cannot by his love draw anyone to him. He is a God who is working into these laws and orders. He is kept an order for the sun. For every planet he has kept an order. To the earth he has kept certain orders. And to the sea he has kept certain orders. Everything is functioning under these orders. Even if she is the queen, in order to go to the king, there is a law for her. She can dress properly. And she can be in the palace. But to go to the king's place where he is seated, only in a certain limits she can go. Like the wives which are speaking in the houses, she cannot speak. As she is calling the houses, she cannot call. Immediately she cannot stretch forth ahead. She cannot do anything like this. She can stand at the doorstep. Only if the king sees her and stretches out his structure, she can go in. If he seems to be busy, this structure will not be stretched forth, she has to come out. After this, she cannot stand there for a moment. It was like this, these laws were abiding those days. But in the midst of this, she fasted that she might find favor in the sight of the king. She did not eat neither drink for three days. And the maidens with her also did fast likewise. In her mind was that this king should stretch forth his structure. If the structure is not stretched, if stretched forth, there is mercy, if it is not stretched forth, then it is judgment. Today's messages, the Lord is stretching forth his structure for you, for the church and for his people. The Lord is speaking to you, I as the Lord of lords from heaven is stretching out my structure for you. Under the children of God who are standing in a position of life or death, the Lord is stretching out his structure to give you life. She is crying out in a desperate situation. She had no sleep. She could not have the mind to eat. She felt no hunger. She was not thirsty to drink water. Somehow when I go to the banquet, the king should stretch forth his structure. As much as possible, I will go before the king and stand for him and in his sight and beyond this, the Lord should work. I will go and stand but the Lord should work for me. This was what running in her mind. One day fasting was over. Second day fasting was over. Third day fasting was over. She put on a royal apparel. And she went to the inner court of the king's house. And she went and stood over the position where the king sat on his throne. Today from the heaven, if structure has to be stretched forth towards you, you should empty yourself. It is needed that you should humble yourself. It is this time that you should surrender yourself. Are you going to stand for your family? How many of you are waiting that the structure should be stretched forth from heaven? For my mother. For my father. For my children. For my business. For my ministry. And for my future. For my needs. Therefore what should we do for this? Firstly, we should empty ourselves. Fasting is the experience of living in the presence of the Lord. In Tamil it is fasting. Without eating or drinking. That is dwelling with God. Firstly, you humble yourself. Before the close of this meeting, that the Lord is going to stretch out his structure for many of them. If the Lord should stretch out his structure for us, we all should be come like Esther this morning. What is the meaning of Esther? A hidden star. She is not revealing herself but she is living a hidden life. Your life is hidden with Christ and God. When we are not revealing ourselves and are hidden and ask for the Lord to reveal his mercy towards us, then before the close of this meeting for you and your family, this Lord is going to stretch his structure. She emptied herself. Three days she was emptying herself. If there will be any hindrance. If the king will not access. If he would be annoyed. So many thoughts and questions were struggling with her. But even beyond this, she took on the royal apparel and put on herself. I have been emptying myself for the past three days and the Lord will surely make his structure to stretch forth towards me. Putting on the royal apparel shows the putting on of faith. Not only fasting but along with this fasting, if faith is joined, it does great work. Some of them will fast without faith. Some of them will speak in faith but in the presence of God, they cannot empty themselves. On the third day, putting on the royal apparel, Esther came to the presence of the king. Dear beloved, this is the day that the Lord is going to stretch out his structure. Why she was in this struggle? There was an attack of an enemy. It was not the destruction of one. Haman was working that he should destroy the whole of Jews. He was doing a wretched work to destroy the whole Jews. These are the days that the people of the church should be very careful because these are the last days that the lion and the tiger and the bear is going to come to devour the people. Satan is striving and he is working to enter into each family. With fasting and prayer and watching, you pray and you overcome them that he might not enter your house. As in Psalm hundred and forty-four verse fourteen, an oxen may be strong to live that there be no breaking in or going out, you should fast and free and be stronger the Lord. Even after coming to that highest position, she did not remain to her whether it is life or death. How much ever we progress in our worldly life, there are problems also proceeding us. Sickness is following us. And our needs are following us. She got the right answer to her question. Every time we are emptying houses, the Lord is looking upon us. In your sickness, he is seeing as to how you are looking unto him. He is seeing as to how much you are grieved when you have some troubles. It is not his will that he should grieve you but looking at your grief, he is having compassion upon you. Maudika and all the whole of the Jews are fasting and they are praying that she should find favor in the king's presence. Without it said fasting, there is nothing which is impossible. With fasting and prayer, if you are not able to change anything with this Bible, you cannot change anything. This kind of devil will not depart without fasting and prayer. Fasting is a great weapon which is crushing the breathing of the people. Fasting is a life which is bruising the dead. Fasting is not knocking the doors of heaven but opening the doors. Fasting is drawing the law towards you. These are things we should learn. One time you fast and you can shake the whole world. After three days of fasting when the whole tribe of Jews were lamenting, she went into the presence of this king and he hugged her. She is asking what do you want? Whatever you will request, it will be granted to you. She found favor in his sight. On the basis of this word of God, I feel in my spirit that the Lord has come and blessed his golden structure. Whatever might be your problem, after the message, there will be time given to you and you ask for the golden structure to be stretched forth towards you. The Lord is almighty. There is nothing impossible with him. He can work at all places. Even if you are cast into the hell from that hell, his hand will lift you up. Because he has almighty power over you. Today the Lord is going wanting to stretch out his golden structure and remove all your pain. As you hear this message, let your vision be towards that golden structure. You look at the Lord who is seated on the throne and his golden structure stretched towards you. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. When that golden structure was stretched forth towards her, all the problems in her life are solved. What do you want? What is that request? What is the prayer request you have in this meeting? Not coming and praying towards me after the meeting is over, now you are directly praying towards God. You intervene with God directly. Don't come around. You call the Lord directly. You make him to speak to you directly. Let the Lord intervene with you individually. When she went, that golden structure was stretched towards her. Esther came near and touched the top of the structure. You come near and touch the grace of the Lord. For a girl, she had twelve years of pain in her body. She could not put a stop into it. And the word of God, there are many explanations given to it. The doctors could not cure her. With her money, she could not cure her. Finally, what she did? She did not go and touch Jesus but the hem of the garment. Before the close of this meeting, touch the top of the structure. When that structure is stretched forth. There will be an end to your pains. Your requests have been accepted by God. Hereafter, there is no death to the two stars. There is no lost your business. There are no problems to families. In your life, there is no struggle of death. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. When this structure is stretched forth, there is a solution to your problems. For Esther, the king stretched forth his structure. It was a marvel, everything to everyone. And to Vasti, this structure was not stretched forth. There are thousands of virgins along with Esther, this structure was not stretched forth for them. But unto Esther, this structure was stretched forth. Dear beloved, for your neighbors, it will not be held out but for you, it is held out. If this structure is held out, then your prayer is answered. There is an end to your pains. And your hope will not be fulfilled. And you will find favor in their sight to the Lord. You will be removed of your pains and you will be healthy. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. In numbers, we can see a man of God coming to cause the people of God. We know about him who is Belaim. And he was once the prophet. He was later for money, he was a sorcerer. The grace that the Lord gives is the prophecy. If you use this grace of God for money, then you are also an enchanter. That is what is happening. That is what is happening. Firstly he was the prophet of the Lord. He is saying that now he is sacrificed I will go meet the Lord and come in numbers twenty-three. Numbers twenty-three three you can read of this. He is saying that I will go meet the Lord and come and the Lord met Belam. What is told in numbers thirty-one? He was a sorcerer. Children of God should not be like this. Children of God who are spiritual should not be cast into such a place. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. In reading numbers twenty-four verse seventeen. He said that the sceptre shall rise out of Israel. From Israel a sceptre shall rise out. One is the sceptre stretched out for you. When that sceptre is held out towards you if you touch the top of the sceptre even to half of the kingdom that request is granted to you. A star shall come out of the Hebrews. And there will be a sceptre that rises out of Israel. Secondly the Lord is causing a sceptre to come out to you. What is the work of it? Then this sceptre is rising out it will smite the corners of Moab. And it will destroy all the children of Shet. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Today the Lord is coming as the Lord who is stretching out his sceptre. Have you seen the king? Everybody will have a rod in their hand that is the sceptre. When it is said that this is the king of Jews. These soldiers let out a straw in his hand and they bowed down before him knelt before him and said hail king of the Jews. About Jesus Christ it is said in numbers twenty-four seventeen. There shall be a star which shall come out of Tchika. And the sceptre shall rise out of Israel. Today what is the Lord working for you secondly? This sceptre is going to do five things. I would want to state this to you. Firstly when the sceptre is stretched forth for you your fastings and your requests will be answered. Keeping something in your mind you are fasting and you have gone weak. Is this Sunday service for sleeping? This is the time when sceptre should be stretched out for you. Firstly the Lord is stretching out his sceptre to cause an end to your pains to your struggles to your strides and your tears. Secondly the Lord is stretching out his sceptre. What is the work of that sceptre? It will smite the corners of Moab. It will destroy all the children of Shet. We see that this sceptre is putting out two powers. You all know about Moab? That is the curse of generation. The generation of Moab is bound to the children of law. For thousand generations they should not stay pain to the presence of God. See how it would be? What does this show? When this sceptre is rising out then it is destroying the curse which is against you. It is smite the corners of Moab. There were many families which were in the curse. And it affected many of the families like some this. When one of my relatives was sick in my family I contacted Pastor Arudha. One child was born but the feet was bent like this. Because his leg was bent in that small age they tried many efforts but it was not possible. Finally? They prayed to Pastor Arudha. He placed his hands and said this is curse and the remedy for this is to fall at the feet of the Lord. But they did not fall at the Lord's feet. Now he is married and he is fine but even now his leg is not right. They did not go and fall at the feet of Jesus for the curse to be removed. Like this you examine and see there is any curse in your family. If God willing I would like to speak as to how curse is coming. Or we can take a subject as to what is the curse. But when the sceptre of the Lord shall arise it will smite the corners of Moab. The Lord is going to smite all the curse which is in your life. Maybe it might not come upon you but that curse might come upon the children. That curse might be in your business. That curse might be upon your parents. Because of this you are weary because these curses are affecting your families and you have become weary and it's not going out of your families. Sheth means one who is given in his stead. In your stead many problems are given to you. For the goodness that you had only evil is given to you. The reward for your goodness is evil. And what the goodness you have done you have got evil name. And for the ministry you have done you have gained punishment. For the tears you have shed it seems as though you have shed tears in vain. That sceptre is smiting the corners of Moab and destroying all the children of Shet. These days kings are not having sceptres. And these days kings are less. But a few are having their rods in their hands. If it is stretched out it is full of authority. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. If the Lord should stretch out his sceptre then the curse which is against you and the evil which is against you the Lord will destroy. Before the close of the meeting I believe that you will stretch this sceptre. If after coming to this meeting if this sceptre is not stretched forth towards you and there is nobody that prays in this world like you. As you have missed the communion yesterday do not miss the taste of this message also. When the sceptre of the Lord is arising the curse upon you will not stand. He slitted upon the cross its curse. He became a reason for all our curse. And he became a curse for us. This is what is written in Gerasens chapter three. Because he became a curse for us today the corners of Moab will be smitten. If the curse in the child of God's life is prolonging see how its effect will be. Thirdly? Psalm 110 verse two. Thirdly the Lord is stretching out his powerful sceptre. Here the Lord is extending the rod of the strength. The rod of the strength. When it comes thou shalt rule in the midst of the enemies. Do not be worried about your problems. Your household may become your enemies. But looking at this be not afraid. Then you are telling the truth you will be an enemy. In Psalm 110 the Lord says that he will send out this rod of strength out of Zion. This is not an ordinary rod. The mercy of rod was stretched forth for Esther. The Lord caused the sceptre to rise out of Israel and it smote the corners of Moab. You strive. To obtain goodness from the Lord you do not lead him but try. A rod shall rise out of Israel. Only by the one who is striving in prayer the Lord shall work with rapture. Thirdly the rod shall rise out of Zion. The people of God should become powerful. The righteous shall be bold and light. We have the strength of the unicorn. A Samson we should be strong. And there is no fear for Samson at all. He is not afraid of anything. He went to a city. And he locked the doors of the city. And he locked the doors of that high wall. And that was the huge wall and that fort in that land and he locked the doors. And the enemies are just waiting outside. He did not have the mind when he was powerful that he will be locked up with the enemies. When he came. And that door was locked. And he did not go back. And he did not think about it. He did not think as to what is going to happen. He came straight near the time gate. And it was locked. He only saw that it was locked. He just shook the door. And the door was plucked out with its length. And taking it and putting it on his shoulders. What is the shock? He did not even doubt about the strength which was in him. He that is in you is greater than he that is in the world. Looking at the huge mountain the Lord says oh great mountain when Zerubabel comes you will come. Oh great mountain watered thou thou shalt become as dust before Zerubabel. The Lord shall send the rod of the strength out of Zion then shall thou rule in the midst of the enemies. Do not be afraid of the enemies. In the midst of the enemies the Lord will prepare a chief. But David Allah has told us that the children of God will be saved. He very beautifully says that thou prepares a table before me in the presence of my enemies and thou anointeth my head with oil. You can see of many incidents the word of God. When Ben came that he might kill Jacob. When he was running he was following him. What did the Lord say? It is good that you are speaking to Jacob but do not speak anything evil as in goodness. He carrying him brought him home. He said that I have power to do evil. But the God whom you are worshiping he cautioned me to deny it. With that same person he sat in his feet. And Esau said that I will not be without killing. Well that same Esau he puts his hand on his shoulder. If the Lord be with you. If that sceptre which is rising out of Zion the path of Shet is free. If it is stretched forth for you today. Do not say anybody has enemies but in the midst of the enemies there will be a feast around for you. When I was in a faith home. There was a problem for noise. The servant of God before me promised to put glasses and hinder the noise. After he came that same problem was prolonging. They called me in the station and quiet. You have promised to put the glasses put it fast. I said I will put the glasses but when I get money I will do it. Like this we had the conflict. And that inspector and myself crossed the station itself. He did speak much in the beginning then finally came down. I became I was normal in the beginning then I was very high. I asked him finally what can you do? I do not know the laws but I know the word of God and what can you do if we are not going to do it? Immediately he became tension. I will see as to what I am going to do for you. With this conflict this was ended. I took him back and he took left. There was a meeting after that. And for the permission I gave a letter. He knew that that letter is going from us. And he chased out the person who took the letter. He asked him to flee. Before that I had got all the permits from the higher authorities. He knew that. But still because under his jurisdiction he showed his power. Sunday was the procession. Friday he said you should not conduct it. And I was totally upset. That he revenge. What is going to happen? But we had a believer who was in an important posting to support us. He was in a higher authority like him. Then he said why pastor are you upset? Tomorrow you see you have to how I am doing with him. The next day? In a few moments that my letter was got by him. Next day? After the tearing meeting? Next day was the procession. And the close of the tearing meeting? That same inspector came into our church. We who had a clash between us he came in and said you have come newly and just shook hands with me as though he do not know me. And he came sat in my room? And the SP was saluted in my room itself. The meeting was conducted. Procession was off. He came walking in that procession. Before the time that the procession is over? In that city not one road we can cross. Without crossing the permits you cannot go in any city. I went and asked it is just five thirty only by seven thirty the food will be ready can we go an extra round? Immediately going and asking him he said go anywhere you want. In Madras city you can go anywhere and come no problem at all. The meeting was conducted. In all the four days meeting he only brought his car. In every hotel the jeep went and.
break the iron doors
And the heart of the living will give you the treasures which is hidden Because his structure is the righteous structure Although it delays his judgment, will not fail The king will ask for that day, but the Lord will wait and he will kill The Lord will wait and kill But you have given us your blessings, who has taken them? You don't have to worry about this, because his structure is the righteous structure He will conquer your actions
Therefore do not be afraid that your righteous things have gone That this is the righteous structure, the Lord will stand on your behalf and do righteousness
Luke's Gospel, Chapter 18 Verse 7 When God gave his own elect which cried day and night unto him, though he bade long with them I tell you that he will avenge them speedily Today there is going to be a structure which is stretched out for you All these years you have not got your righteousness and justice Today there will be righteousness and judgment towards you If he should command, it will be in what he commands to say If he will stretch out this structure and say this righteousness towards you, nobody can hinder The lamb who came to curse said, "The Lord is blessing I cannot do any hinder that they might be blessed" That can't be an unknown structure which is stretched out for you The enemy might have stretched out his structure towards you He might send his power towards you But that strange structures the Lord is going to breach today In Ezekiel, Chapter 19 What is told there? What does the word of God say? Verse 11, we see that she had robes for the structures of them that bear rule But the fire proceeded In verse 14, we see that you say to her that there is no more robe of such rule There might be structures with Satanism towards you Men would have showed their paths towards you